Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's August 9th, 2022. We're going to begin our city council meeting. I'd like to see here. First of all, we have a roll call of the council members, please.
Council President Roder.
Here.
Councilmember De Priest.
Here.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember De Priest, would you please lead us in the plat- legion?
Ready, begin. I am the president of the city of Hayden. The city of Hayden supports One Nation, and it is law, and justice.
Would any member of council care to call for additions or corrections to tonight's Hearing none? All right, we will proceed with the consent calendar. Ladies and gentlemen, there are many things that the Hayden, City of Hayden, does during the course of business that the public really never sees, but still need to be approved by city council. So we're going to go through the consent calendar right now. For consent calendar 1A, approval of change order number six for the Honeysuckle Avenue, Fourth Street Roundabout. 1B, ratification of the July payroll. 1C, ratification of bills for payment from July 25th, 2022. 1D, approval of bills for payment. Council, do you have any questions about any of these items? Hearing none? I'd appreciate a moment, pardon me, a motion to approve the consent calendar items.
I had motion for a moment of, oh, no. I had motion to approve consent calendar.
Second? Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on the consent calendar items? Hearing none, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Council President Roder.
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest.
Yes.
Those pass. Our next session is, section is for the visitor in public comment period. If you wish to make a public comment, I would appreciate it if you would please bring a form up for the general public comment period, or if you have a comment during our public hearing later, we will address those later. For all those that are commenting, we have a couple of rules. First of all, you are limited to five minutes, and I will cut, we will give you a warning at four minutes, and I will cut you off at five minutes if you have not yet finished. Also, I would, we would like, wouldn't you stand up, please, to tell us your name and whether or not you are a citizen of Hayden? Start off with Mr. Paul Akayama.
My name is Paul Akayama. This is my wife Linda.
Hi.
And we are citizens of this great town of Hayden. I'm going to read a letter that Linda will bring up to you towards the end of my recitation here. I will only read the introduction and the closing of the letter. Please, I ask you all to find some time and to read the entire body of it. Okay, this letter is, is in response to Mayor, your letter to our, the petitioners dated July 6th. Dear Mayor Foresell, thank you for replying to our neighbors and residents that signed the petition dated June 21, 2022 regarding the existing 8.35 acre wetland and stream in the proposed Stone Creek North subdivision. We submitted the petition to you in the council and voiced our requests during the public comment period at the June 28 council meeting. On behalf of the 150 residents who signed the petition, we are grateful for you and the council in considering our receipt. Upon reviewing your letter and consulting with our neighbors, we believe some of our state, some of our statements and information presented in the June 28 council meeting are misrepresented, and therefore, for the record, we are respectfully clarifying several points. Here is a summary of clarifications germane to the petition, followed by our points of clarification to your letter. So I'm just going to hit the two main points to the petition. Wetlands. The wetlands do exist and are documented by federal and state agencies. The City of Hayden is decision-making authority. Our petition requests the city to modify the master development agreement, MDA, to protect the wetlands and stream in accordance with MDA section 7.3, and require the developer to implement City of Hayden Code 12-3-4, subparagraphs 19D2. The second point in the petition, logging. It was not our intent to supplant property owner's right to remove trees, but to integrate the logging operations into MDA 4.5 processes. This topic is somewhat moot now, except for any future logging operations, since the initial logging operations appear to be complete. Please let us know if our council plans on addressing the petition, and if so, what the course of action may be. We welcome the opportunity to discuss the content of this letter further. We believe it is not too late to address these matters based on the conditions stated for the November 24, 2020 plumery plat approval and contractual items in the MDA. At risk of burning up my five minutes, I just wanted to add, comment that as, when we began or this endeavor to clarify and have a better understanding of the, the processes and the approach and the codes and the drawings, we just wanted to pull alongside and get some questions answered and help out where we may. So actually, personally, I regret having to go back and forth in letter writing. We don't like to do that. Okay, I'm going to skip the main body of this letter now and allow you to read it at your time. So we're jumping forward to the end of the letter. As of the date of this letter, we have received the fourth resuminal from the city through the public records. The drawings continue to show wetlands to be filled and the surface storm water to be channeled into the stream. We are concerned about what possibly may result with the channelization and running of the service water into that stream as it flows behind the Stone Creek, Rockingar, and the Bear Creek neighborhoods. In summary, the city reviewer and the applicant has not acknowledged the existence of the wetlands in compliance with processes outlined in City Code 12-3-4, nor addressed the stormwater management design relative to City Code 835. As stated in our public comment in the June 28 council meeting, we are not anti-development. We do, however, encourage responsible code-compliant development that supports the protection of public health and safety and general welfare. Linda will present to you the letter.
Great.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Probably need that. Thank you, sir. Got some more comments going up here. Thank you, ma'am. Are these, Mr. Bob Dowd?
Boss Dowd.
Pardon me.
Dowd.
Dowd Bob.
My name is Dowd Boss, and I live at 627 East Lacy here in Hayden. And I just want to kind of talk about two things. Last week, I attended a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and it was in regards to a Gleason conditional use permit. And going through that and listening to everything that went on, I did speak at that meeting, and I spoke about this letter from the Sheriff's Department that basically talks about the safety of the city, traffic, emergency services, the number of calls from, you know, 911 the previous years, over 10,000 from the City of Hayden. And it was acknowledged that the letter was received, but there was no discussion about that letter. There was no discussion about, you know, the effects of additional traffic. So the reason I wanted to bring that up is because I've been going through the city's website along with the 2040 plan, which is quite the Bible. And I just wanted to read a statement that's in the city website. Says, "The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as an advisory body, hears, reviews, and makes recommendations to the city council regarding the land use decisions. The commission participates in making recommendations through a quasi-judicial process." That's not what they're doing, they're approving. So as stated above, the Planning and Zoning Commission should be acting as an advisory body and only. Currently, they have the ability to binding decisions for conditional use permits, CP views, and circumvent the elected city council. Since we voted to elect officials to the council based primarily on their campaigns to control and advocate for responsible growth, we would like all decisions to be made by the elected officials and limit the commission as an advisory council only from asking the city council to take that and think about it and actually act on it and, you know, discuss this. I also want to talk a little bit about a number of things that are inside this 2040 plan. Says, "Hayden is regionally connected city with a small-town feel defined by reasonable growth and planning. The city maintains strong systems that align with the values of its citizens." We're losing that small-town feel very quickly. Just going to go through a number of things. I've got tons highlighted, I have five minutes. The comprehensive plan is a living document. This is table 2.2, item 2, number 2. The document serves as a guide for development. Components of the comprehensive plan are updated as necessary to reflect the community's vision. That means if the community changes its mind on the original vision a few years ago, we need to start turning and change our minds. That's the reason we fought to change the city council, to try to change this plan. Adequately cite essentially public facilities and utilities without compromising surrounding neighborhood's integrity and character. I don't believe that's happening today. Two more. Land use decisions should consider the preservation and enhancement of natural resources. Wetlands that we just heard about. Last, or not lastly, but regularly evaluate and update impact fees to support the transportation systems and part, require developer participation and donations and mitigation. So last, I'd like the city to really consider, and I know this is a big ask that I'm going to throw out there, but I'd like you guys to really consider some sort of moratorium, whether it's 90 days, six months, one year. I'm just throwing it out there. I moved here in 2018, started participating in meetings for about nine months. I basically stopped coming because, I'll be honest with you, a lot of citizens feel this way. We get ignored. You hear us, but we're ignored. When the new council members got elected, Mr. Mayor came on board, I'm excited. I'm hoping that we can start slowing things down. We're not against development, but we really need to slow things down. So the last thing I want to throw out there is, right now, I believe the city has about 25 projects ongoing in some phase, whether it's moving dirt, framing, somewhere. Approximately 2,200 to 2,500 units, whether it's a single family or multifamily. I'm just throwing this out there. The average homeowner has 1.9 cars per family, per home. So you do that math. We're getting ready to add in the next 12 to 18 months, 4,000 to 5,000 more cars to the streets of this city. And on top of that, that doesn't include UPS, delivery vehicles, any other type of transportation vehicles, right? Garbage, everything else. Just consider taking a pause. Go ahead. One minute to go. So I'm just asking that the city take a pause, and I know you guys are getting ready to really talk about the 2040 plans, just, you know, rezoning map. I think that needs to be put on hold for another year. I think the whole city needs to get involved, and we can do this, and we can get people involved. They just need to know that they're going to be heard and listened to. Well, anyway, thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Rick Stokie. I live at Maple Place in Honeysuckle, and I'm, what I'm here for is to complain about the work that was done on the roundabout there. For the last 16 years, I've taken care of the back part of Honeysuckle, all the way up to Maple Place and down to, or all the way up to Maple and then down to Maple Place. I have mowed that entire area for the last 18 years. Okay, I haven't been paid a dime for it, didn't ask for any money, didn't ask for any recognition. I've taken care of it, picked up all the trash, the garbage, the rocks, everything everybody throws. Well, they do the construction, beautiful job on the construction, but you ought to see what the mess they made of the rest of it. I went out and mowed yesterday. I got to go down and buy new blades for my tractor because it totally destroyed them from all the rocks and the ruts that they put in that road. I don't know who to complain to, you know? If I'm in my 70s and I'm getting to the point, I can't do this anymore, you know? And I thought Hayden's supposed to take care of that. You know, we live in a beautiful city, but yet you drive around and Highway 95 the same way. You put up that beautiful wall down there to cover the trailer park, and now go look at it. Look at all the weeds, center of the roads, everywhere, just, you know, it's trash. That's not Hayden. You know, you're interested in building all these homes. I think you're building, what, 45 or 50 homes right behind where I live? You know, where are we gonna, what are we gonna do with the traffic? And not only that, but the roundabout, you ought to see how they, how they drive down there right now. There's nobody drives 30 mile an hour. I've clocked a couple of people doing 80 mile an hour down there. At night, they go down there and you can hear their, their motorcycles and their, the loud, I call them rice burners, just, you know, think it's a raceway. I called into the Sheriff's Department, asked them to patrol it. I never see anybody out there. I don't know if they go out there, they could probably ride enough tickets to cover hiring somebody to do the hard work. So, you know, that's my complaint. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokie. And Mr. Stokie, thank you for your efforts to, to take care of that on your own. I'm sure everybody here appreciates that.
It's very nice of you to do that.
Glenn Patrick.
Yes, sir. Hello, thanks for listening to me. I'm Glenn Patrick and my wife Brenda Patrick, and we live on Maroon Creek in the Stone Creek Development. I've been able to do a lot of research myself, but, you know, listened to Paul and Rick talk a lot about what's going on, and we do have a concern about the wetlands. Our property backs up to the Bear Creek, Creek back there, you know, lots of wildlife and stuff. I'm surprised that when, it appears that when people are bringing up the idea of wetlands, that's being ignored. And that, that's shocking to me that nobody wants to address wetland issues. And it is a soggy field out there, and there's, I know there's ways to mitigate some of that, and that's fine, right? We're not against construction or development, like everybody else has said, but if, if it's a wetlands issue, I, I thought there were like Corps of Engineers and federal regulations and city and county and stuff like that. So it kind of, kind of shocks me that that particular topic's not being addressed. So it's kind of my primary concern with that. Also, kind of, kind of on the fly, since I didn't bring, or write anything up, think anything, I do want to, you know, show a lot of support for our law enforcement out there. I know they're understaffed and they've got lots of calls for service coming in here. We have a supportive community for them, and I want to see that we continue to support them. And we don't want them to get overwhelmed to the, to the point where we can't control it, because that's when more and more things keep happening, once it becomes a target of opportunity for the less than desirable people that are out there. So I want to, I want to appreciate our law enforcement over there and just know that myself and my wife and all the neighbors I know are in support of, of our law enforcement here, so. Want to say anything? Okay, thank you for your time, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Ms. Putz, I'm gonna, because we have a hearing later tonight, I'm going to ask you, because your, your, your topic involves that, I'll ask you to testify during the hearing we'll have shortly.
Fill out the other form.
There's a, there's a second form there.
Wrong one. Tried to hear, but I took no calls. I'm gonna have my notes back later.
You can bring it up to me before we get to public comment.
Would anyone else care to make any, any public comments? The next part of our hearing this evening is going to be a, actually a public hearing. It is a city-initiated public hearing for the fee schedule rate increases. We'll have a, we'll have some staff present some information on that, and then we will be happy to listen to public comment involved. Julia, get ready. There's two parts to this. Mr. Brett Boyer is our city administrator.
A big chunk of, of the changes have to do with our recreation, get some fees up to schedule, so I'm gonna, while I get this ready for the sewer side of things, I'm, I'm gonna have Susie Akano, our director in recreation, just mention briefly some of the reasons why and what we're doing with increases with recreation.
Okay. Well, mainly, we've had some increases in, obviously staffing costs have gone up as well as equipment, and then one of our big things was our t-shirt costs went quite a bit up. So we had to increase for the individual programs, we increased those rates. And then you might see that the team fees, so for our team sports and stuff like that, we used to charge like a team fee and then per-player fee. What we did was combine those. So it looks like a big increase, but it actually isn't because we just combined it. So now we don't have to, it's going to expedite customer service for people because they don't have to add each individual player fee up and then add the team fee. It's just one team fee. If 50% or more are in the city, you get a resident fee. If it's less than that, then you get a non-resident fee. So those were the big ones. Other ones were mainly due to, you know, we have to be competitive, like we are losing staff to McDonald's and Taco Bell, and they pay more than we do. And so in order to be able to get some of those people on our payroll, we have to, we have to, we have to increase that, and that also goes, that gets passed on to the customer.
Thank you.
Is there anybody that has any specific questions?
Council members have any specific questions of, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, I have a question. So Susie, for the, the sports, for the cost increases, do we also have scholarships available for students?
We do. We don't turn anybody down who needs a scholarship. Anybody who needs one, they get it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great question. I have a question if I can. Yes, sir. Susie. Council President Roder. Thank you. I know one of the, if I'm correct, and I want you to verify it, that you have to deal with, is that we have to rent gym space and fields also, is that true?
So we, we, yes, we rent from the school district. We get a, we have a per-hour rate for the gyms and for the fields that we use at Atlas. So, yes, we have to pay $5 an hour for the outside fields and $11 an hour for the gym space.
And those increase, is that correct?
It's, no, it's the same, but it's significant. It's a significant cost. And we've kind of been trying to like absorb some of it, but we just can't absorb all of that anymore.
Thank you. Ma'am, I'm sorry, but at this point, it's just a discussion amongst the council. Sorry. Any other questions amongst the council?
Hey. So that's the first part of the fees that are being changed. And we try to, on an annual basis, look at our fees and make sure that they're in line and covering the costs of our, our programs and other systems. Another fee that we have looked at each year is the sewer operations and maintenance fee. That's the monthly fee that all citizens that are hooked onto the sewer pay. And three years ago, we had a financial company look at and put together a plan to pay for and keep us on track as far as the financial side of our sewer and operations. And so we, this, this would be the fourth year, so we'll go into FY '23, of that plan. And so those of you that have been following this have seen these numbers. A lot of you looking out probably haven't seen or understand the difference between the fees we have. And so Sandy Rudy is our finance director. Do you want to start off with your piece in the fee portion that's going up? And I'll take it and talk about the difference.
Well, I'm not sure what you want me to go over, just.
Do you have the, talk about the table.
The rate structure.
Yeah.
So 2021, which is the fees that we're currently under, are $105 bi-monthly, which is $52.50 per month. And we're proposing, based on this study, to raise that to $110 bi-monthly or $55 monthly. And again, that's based on the study that FCS did for us to pay for the DEQ mandated updates to the sewer plant.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about it. So it's basically a $2.50 set. And so they had us on a five-year plan that was incremental to, to get us to the amounts that we need to, to pay for the cost of the system. So many people look at and think of sewer as one, one thing. And so I, I've got here, and this is a sheet that we've handed out to folks to help them understand the difference. So you have the sewer operations and maintenance fee. Again, that is the portion that the citizens are paying on a monthly basis. That's the portion that's, that we're proposing to go up $2.50 per month, or it's $5 bi-monthly, which, so when you get your bill, you're paying for two months. So the proposal is to go to $55 per month. The other fee that we have is a sewer capitalization fee. And so a lot of times, people confuse these two things. The sewer capitalization fee is paid for when a new business comes in or a new residence comes in. They pay what's called a capitalization fee. And so when you talk about growth paying for itself, the folks, when they are purchasing a new home and come in, they're paying this capitalization fee that buys capacity into the system. And so the existing citizens are not paying for the capitalization fee or that part of it. And so that capitalization fee is designated only for expansion of the system, and that's why we say you need to keep those separate. When people say, oh, you know, new people are coming in, it's going to cost me more, it's not. It's, it's based on they're paying their capitalization fee, that goes towards expanding the system. What citizens, existing citizens are paying is this monthly fee. That is for the wastewater treatment plant. So the, the Harbs plant of which we are a partner out there on Atlas, there's a plant out there that treats the sewer. It, it goes there, and there's a whole facility there. That facility is being upgraded. We had a Phase 1. The city borrowed a little over $7 million for our portion of the upgrade of that system. The second phase of that system is being conducted right now. So if you went out there and you, and you looked out in the field. and you looked out in the field, you're gonna see a bunch of capital items being, being built. Those improvements are primarily to meet the federal requirements of the permit requirement. So that plant is under a, a permit that we have to meet. And they put some requirements on, and it's been Coral Lane, Post Falls, all the systems in the area, to meet a certain standard. That plant, because of, you had to reduce the phosphorus down to a certain level, could not, in that current technology, meet the standards. And so what they're putting in is this new filtration system that's fairly expensive, that will reduce the phosphorus and some other things down to the level to meet those permit requirements. And so when we say, so when we put the loan, the second loan, which is this year, is 9.4 million is about where we're at. You take those two, the city has borrowed that money to pay off our portion of the necessary improvements to meet the permit requirements. And those permit requirements have to be met by all the citizens in the city. So it's not just any, any new folks. And so that, so I wanted to explain what and why. That's a, a big portion of why we're on this track to make sure that we're, that we're putting enough money in there to be fiscal responsible and pay for our responsibilities there. Other parts of it, within the city, the city has a responsibility of maintaining what's called lift stations, which are basically pumps that send the wastewater to the treatment plant. So we have lines and pumps that we also maintain and pay for the, the maintenance. So that's also part of the monthly payment that people are covering. The costs, obviously, as far as electricity, all of those things were included in those monthly costs. I don't have a, a table here to compare with others. I think we're about in the middle as far as our monthly rate. So we're not high, we're not the lowest, as far as the $55 per month. If, I, I do have some of that information. I didn't plan on putting that out there. Here's a couple of things. I've probably already hit some of these. It's to meet the federal act requirements. And we have a responsibility to have those done and in by 2024. And we're on track. We have a couple of members on council that attend the Harbs meetings and help oversee that. And we are on track to meet those timing requirements for this.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Could you, for the folks who may not be familiar with it, could you tell us what Harbs means?
Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board. And it's comprised of the city of Hayden, the county, and the Hayden Irrigation District.
Sewer District.
Sewer District. And so those three entities all have basically a vote on this and, and we're all together. We each have a different percentage based on the number of connections we have. And then Coral Lane, Post Falls also have similar treatment plants. And then the city back three years ago chose to do this gradual approach to get us, as far as the financial, instead of just raising it by $15 per month, whatever, we've, we chose to do a gradual approach is. And then part of that, those of you that were around the city back in 2012, was involved in a lawsuit, NIBCA lawsuit, which I, I put on there, I don't want to go a lot of detail, but the citizens are paying a portion of that and that ends after next year. That will come off. And we will have basically paid off the costs that were associated with that, that were over a million dollars in just attorney fees to defend that. So those, as far as, to start off and give some information on the public, the council and also citizens that maybe weren't aware, that's an explanation of the costs and, and why we're doing an increase, basically following our financial plan. And we bring that back each year to go through and answer any questions.
Members of council, do you have any questions of Mr. Boyer?
I have, I have one.
Yes, Councilman President Roder.
Yeah, and it's your item number five. And I just want to be clear about that, that we have a phase two that's in process right now of upgrading the sewer plant, which is like a $22 million project roughly?
Just a tad higher, but yeah, close.
So my question is that phase two is purely to meet the regulatory requirements that were set forth for our phosphorus levels that we have to get down to whatever parts per million or billion. It is not to pay for additional capacity for the plant, though it's not paying for new growth on the plant?
Right. So on, on that project, if you go there, there were some improvements in phase one and phase two that were part of planning, where they put in some of the heavier infrastructure, a clarifier, some headworks and some things like that that were part of that. But they separate the costs. And so the funds that paid for anything related to expansion of the system come out of the cap fees. And on this, on that project, Harbs took money from their cap fee, because they get a cap fee as well. They took their, their portion of cap fees to pay for any of the expansion of the system. So they put in like a, a clarifier, but the phase two does not, does not get us to where we will have additional capacity. But it, it did put in a clarifier and a couple of other things where they can slide in, for example, a new pallet of filters. So the building was built big enough that they can slide a filter in there that would expand the capacity. And so it won't cost a lot to, to expand the capacity. But bottom line is those, anything associated with expansion of the system or growth is paid for out of capitalization fees. And it, it's not, on this phase one and phase two, it wasn't a, a high amount of the project. Does that answer your question, ma'am? Councilmember Roder.
Other, other questions of council?
I have a question.
Certainly.
Item number one. Can you lower that? Was that, the Clean Water Federal Act, is that EPA?
Yeah.
Okay. Environmental Protection Agency. Okay. So did those standards change over the past few years? Did they get more stringent?
Yes, they did. That's, and I, I don't remember what year. I mean, they were going through, this is, I don't know, maybe eight years ago, they basically gave notice that they were gonna require, and the phosphorus is the main one that we always talk about because we couldn't reach the phosphorus. And it's like .005 points per billion. It's a very low, tough number. But yes, they have changed, they have changed the requirements. And they do that, so the permit lasts for 10 years. During that 10-year period, some of the, the requirements may change. And so when you go to get the next year's permit, you have to meet, meet those requirements.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
One thing I'd like to point out too, is that any state or body that is downstream works with the EPA to set those standards. And they pretty much have the, this is an irritating point to me, that's why I'm bringing it up, but they pretty much can dictate to us, Washington can dictate to us what those standards should be, and they don't necessarily have to meet those requirements. And my other point is, if you know anybody who's dumping illegally into the wastewater plant, it costs you and me tons of money to treat this stuff. For instance, if people dump paint, one of our biggest thing is those wipes, they clog up the pumps and stuff. If you know anybody that's doing that, please ask them to stop because it's costing you and I as citizens to take care of a problem they're creating. So anyway, I'll get off my soapbox. Thanks.
Well put.
Any other questions?
No further questions. Thank you for that explanation. Now, in this hearing, we will be happy to call on the public to make any comments that they would like. And I have not received. Teresa Roth.
Oh, so you're the only one.
Yes, ma'am, you are the only one.
About?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the sheriff.
No, ma'am. No, the public comment for, this is the public comment for the.
Fees, it's on the fee increases.
For the fee increases.
A fee increase, okay. I, I was, but I do have something to say, but it's not on the fee increase.
I'm sorry, ma'am, it needs to be on the fee increase. That's, that's the issue before the council right now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. But have you done general public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Okay. I, um, needed, okay. I, I can I talk to people after? I have something that's very important that I could.
After the meeting? Absolutely. You betcha. Since I have received no request for public comment on the hearing, the hearing is now closed. Counsel, do you have any comments, questions about the fee increases? This would be the time for counsel to have any questions on fee increases or observations.
Well, I'll make an observation really, and I think Susie and I spoke about it, she talked about it here. I was concerned originally about the increase in the team fees, but the fact that they have eliminated the team fee and individual fee, I guess brings it back into, you know, perspective that it is not the, the large increase that it appears to be. You look at what's happening, again, needing to pay people that work and help a fair wage to do it, you know, inflation and everything else that's happening out there. And as Mr. Boyer talked about the sewer, I think they're all reasonable and rational fees to be increasing at this time.
Just for the public's information, we are required anytime we have fee increases to have a public hearing. Standard, standard procedure under state law. Do I hear any other questions or comments regarding the fee schedule? Hearing none, may I ask for a motion to adopt the proposed fee schedule?
No motion.
Second?
Second.
Do we have any further comments, or questions, discussion about the fee schedule? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the Citizen Task Force recommendation for an increase in law enforcement services here in Hayden.
We have Nancy.
And Nancy, how are you tonight?
She's muted. We can't hear you.
Sorry, we can't hear you. Can you say something and see if we can hear? Okay.
Yes.
Yeah. We have a one-way conversation going. Sure, give us a call.
She needs.
Nancy, can you give her that number? We'll get that number for you, Nancy.
Does anyone have her phone number by any chance?
I do.
Can you text that to her?
Yeah, if you put the number back.
It's not showing up on my screen that she can see. She doesn't need the audio pin, though.
Nancy, if you can hear, I just texted you the number. Let me read that. Go back to the, make sure it's. She don't let other stuff access.
There you go.
She's reverberating.
Mute, mute.
There we go, can you hear me now?
There you go.
Perfect. Sorry about the confusion. I, right after our last meeting, I was, I did come down with COVID. So I'm sorry, I cannot be there this evening. But we do have this statement ready. Good evening, council members. On behalf of the Public Safety Task Force, I would like to start by thanking all of you for approving the re-establishment of this group. Your interest in examining the public safety needs of our city and your willingness to do that through citizen participation is deeply appreciated. Thank you for giving us a voice in the governance and safety of our community. Over the last four months, this task force has dutifully reviewed data provided to us by the Kootenai County Sheriff's Office. We have considered call service, service call information, response times, and service area data. We have reviewed the cost of onboarding officers and the types of crime that are occurring in our community. We have reviewed information regarding the city budget. It was presented, analyzed, and discussed over the course of many meetings. Together, we learned about public safety, from new terminology to some of the challenges that are facing our officers. As a group, we didn't always agree on all viewpoints, but we analyzed the data in different ways and debated what it meant to come to consensus. We talked quite a bit about growth. We also spoke in great deal about the importance of ensuring the safety of the children who attend our Hayden schools. Through the course of our meetings, a few primary truths emerged. The first is that school safety is important to us. Given recent events around the country, most specifically the horrific events in Uvalde, Texas, the task force members repeatedly expressed their support for ensuring the presence of trained law enforcement in our Hayden schools. We heard arguments that this cost should fall upon the school district. In the end, we decided we were more concerned about the imminent safety of our students than pointing fingers about who should bear that cost. Whether the tax is paid to the schools or to the city, the end result is the same. It is better safety for our students. Number two is that our officers are not safe, and as a result, none of us are as safe as we could be. Calls for service in Hayden are up 60% over the last 10 years. And yet, the number of follow-ups and the rest is down. From that, we can see a lack of accountability that comes with not having enough officers. We heard directly from the sheriff's office that in some circumstances, it may be 30 minutes, 40 minutes or better before officers enter into certain situations. We had a member of our own task force who had an armed standoff situation in his neighborhood that police could. that police could not enter right away because of their own safety, even after a shot had been fired into the floor. This potentially leaves us open to more situations, such as the SWAT standoff in February at the site of a burning home. They cannot enter for backup because they cannot go, or they cannot enter because it is not safe to go without backup. None of us wants higher taxes, none of us. But none of us want to lose a good officer like Greg Moore again either, and our officers are not safe. Hayden is growing. Growth means more crime, and it means a need for more officers. That is simply a fact. We are one of the fastest-growing cities, one of the fastest-growing counties, and the second-fastest-growing state. We already know that there are times when there is no law enforcement presence in our city. That is not acceptable. We know that the ratio of residents to officers is not at a level that is for recommended guidelines for the safety of residents or officers. We know council is doing what it can to control growth, to slow growth, and to have responsible growth. But that will not affect the growth around us. As long as annex stations continue, as long as Spokane grows, more drugs will be in this area, more cars will be driving through Hayden. Regardless of what we do, this is just a fact. There will be more demand on our public safety, and we are already behind. We hear that growth should pay for itself, but counsel, that argument has done nothing so far but to keep us from addressing this reality for several years. While we stand by and argue more drugs pour into this community, that is the cost of doing nothing. Finally, we know that the Hayden budget is not sustainable. This group was given the opportunity to review the Hayden city budget in great detail, and the simple fact is that there is no way for Hayden to support more law enforcement without an increase in the levy amount. The amount is already one of the lowest among all of the 900 or so cities in the state. We all appreciate the work of past councils who worked to keep this low, but perhaps they did so for too long. It needs to be adjusted now in the interest of supporting our law enforcement and bettering our community. On a personal note, I will tell you that in the last five years, my property taxes have gone up $300. When I looked at my bill, I realized that of that, $40 of it goes to Hayden. It's been a $40 increase over five years. I pay about $12 a month for all of the services Hayden provides to me. If my taxes are high, that is not Hayden's fault. I've had people tell me, well, you should just accept and look at it as a bargain. But my mom taught me growing up that a 50% off sale of shoes isn't a deal if you only get one shoe. It's not a bargain if we're not getting what we need as a community. With these ideas in mind and through the analysis of data, the diligence of research and discussion, we formulated our final recommendation to council as follows. We, the members of the Hayden Public Safety Task Force, recommend council support for the addition of six dedicated patrol officers for the city of Hayden, bringing the total number of officers to 10, with one of these to remain a dedicated school resource officer position. We ask this council to bring forward a ballot measure proposing an increase in the levy rate in a sufficient amount to cover the cost of these additional deputies. We recommend this initiative be included on the November 2022 ballot. Finally, we ask the council to consider the creation of a Public Safety Commission to take the place of this task force and ensure continued communication, research, and analysis into our public safety needs of our community as we continue to change and grow into the future. In conversations with a few other task force members today, I was asked to add the following request. Counsel, we know if we put this on a ballot, it may well not pass. But we ask you to remember that is not what matters. What matters is letting the people have a voice. Please do not think that you know better than all of us. Please do not propose that you know our personal budgets or what we are willing to spend our hard-earned money on. Several members of this task force were on fixed income and are still very much in support of a levy increase. We are all in support of at least putting it on a ballot. You cannot assume, per conversation we had at our last meeting, that because you've talked to a dozen people, or two dozen people, or your church congregation, or your office, that you know the will of 16,000-plus residents of this city. We need our voice. Please do not spend a great deal of time tonight debating public safety statistics as if they were an acceptable number of thefts, or murders, or accidents, as if somehow there is a certain amount of welfare checks or drug trafficking that can happen and be okay. We don't need you to debate the statistics tonight, counsel, because that is exactly what you asked us to do, and we have done it. You cannot have a conversation in this evening that will cover what we have discussed over four months. Please trust the process. Please trust what you asked us to do and honor the efforts that have been made by putting this on the ballot. And finally, please understand that if you vote no, you are not taking a stand against taxes. You would be making the efforts of the last few months feel worthless, us giving our time and effort for you to do something else. We are not asking you to support a levy increase tonight. We are asking you to give members of this community what we all want, which is a government owned by and for the people. Your vote today is not to stand for or against a levy increase, but to say whether or not you're going to give the rest of us a vote. Please don't take away my vote, or the vote of this task force, or the other members of this community. We should have a right to vote on this very important issue. I thank you for your time this evening and stand for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, appreciate that. This is a big topic, members of council. Comments, questions? First of all, Ms. Jones, it's, am I correct in, in my, I believe I heard that that the task force unanimously approved the proposal in front of the, in front of the council tonight?
Yes, sir, that is correct. It was even on the show.
Thank you very much.
I have a question regarding that, too. And do we have, which council members voted in favor of it?
We couldn't vote.
We didn't have.
No council members voted on that.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I have a few then. And this might be a question for the sheriff, too, since he's here.
I should mention, we are honored tonight to have Sheriff Bob Norris here with us.
Not anymore, we'll get you everywhere.
Because he's the man. Sheriff Norris, thank you for being here.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
And some of the, some of the questions, because, you know, when making, like the mayor said, this is an important decision, and I don't like to make an important decision without being informed. I mean, I'll just knee-jerk. So I do have some, some questions that maybe you could help me understand this process.
Absolutely, fire away, Mr. President.
So we're talking about taking the amount, contracting with the county for 10 deputies. Is that the proposal?
That's, that's what I mean.
And currently, we have 3.5?
Currently, we have approximately 3.5.
So we're looking at about tripling, less than, not quite tripling, the amount of deputies?
Yes, and, which is still about half of what the private company that did a study for the city of Hayden asked for 12 years ago.
So.
And as you know, as you, as you know, Mr. President, they recommended 20 peace officers and four professional staff members. Here we are with approximately a 5,000 more in population in 2022, and many more calls for service, and big box stores, alcohol establishments. So this is still significantly less than what that private study that the city council embarked upon in 2010.
And then, out of curiosity, how many patrol deputies do you have within the county to do your job?
Well, in general, to do the job.
Not including the jail?
Right.
Staff?
We, we have approximately 70 assigned to patrol.
So then we would be looking at hiring, kind of whatever percentage that is, but not quite more than 10%, we would be hiring.
Yes, we, we absolutely want to be the city of Hayden's police department.
Right. So, can you, how soon can you hire six more deputies?
Well, it's not necessarily, hiring has been challenging, mostly because the housing prices. But we've been pretty, doing a pretty good job with hiring laterals from other states that come here with a couple hundred thousand dollars down to, to purchase something. So, so we're doing, I won't say we're doing great, but we're doing good. So our, our vacancies really come more in the jail. More, more in the jail than they do in patrol.
Because, because both the mayor and I were down at the Idaho Association of Cities meeting, and universally, the cities are saying, we can't find employees, and that included fire and police. The other big issue was funding. So you're not, you're in the, everybody seems to be in the same boat. They need more, but they can't because we have, because of the housing situation, it's very difficult to get people to move here. One of my concerns, because we've had this levy proposal for more sheriff deputies twice, and they've, they've failed. My concern is under economic, current economic situations. We have some of the highest inflation rates that we've had in 40 years. We have high housing, our gas prices. My opinion, we're in a recession. Is, I'm concerned about the response, and I understand from Ms. Jones about, let the people decide. I'm concerned about how people's situation, how their situations are now financially and what they're looking at. And we have a possibility of being drawn into a war, a funding war. So, I, I, I've, I've talked to some folks about who have been in law enforcement, and how you approach this. We've had growth, and I, I've looked at the numbers here, too. I think that that has to be done when you're analyzing a business decision. You, you can't just go by emotional thing, well, I think, or I feel. And we, the mayor and I had some discussion about the numbers, and they're actually flat. We're not seeing big increases, because, I mean, I could go down through here.
Mr. President, we have had these discussions before. They're flat because I have agreed with the city manager that I'm compromising law enforcement in other areas of this county to abide by a contract that I inherited. But I am telling you, as the sheriff of this county, that I want to be your police department, but I can't compromise law enforcement all the time for resident, for police officers, deputy sheriffs coming into this county. I had an executive session with our insurance company. And our insurance company, which is ICRP, has brought many things about how many miles per vehicle and what the risks are, because I can't send one deputy to many calls for service in the city of Hayden anymore. We now have big box stores. You never have two deputies on at any time. You never have two deputies on at any time. How can I send one deputy to an event at a water park you have in your city? Have you been to that water park, Mr. President? It, it could be a very, very contentious situation inside that water park based on the clientele that attracts. We have a big box store now in the city of Hayden. And not only the theft, but the parking lot issues that that big box store brings. Mr. President, what about the alcohol establishments that are now popping up in your city? I would love to be able to say that I don't want to be here tonight, but I'm not here because I want to be. I'm here because of this growth and because of some of the dynamics that are occurring here. And those dynamics, what I just told you about. Would you want your son or daughter to go by themselves to a call for service at one of your alcohol establishments at 1:00 a.m. in the morning?
Well, that's why you do two, correct?
Yeah, but when, when does the city of Hayden have two officers on?
Well, correct me, and this is, I want to understand it.
No, but when, I'm asking you, when does the city of Hayden have more than one deputy on?
Well, my understanding is that you had the county divided up into four quadrants.
No, but I'm, I'm asking you, when does the city of Hayden have more than one deputy on, based on what their contract?
Well, we can only have three and a half, so it doesn't matter.
And how, how many, Mr. President, how many hours a week do I have to provide law enforcement in the city of Hayden? How, how many hours a week?
Well, 24/7.
Well, how many hours is that?
Do the math.
168 hours. And how many, how many deputies, or how many hours does three deputies give? 120 hours, plus the, the 20, so 140 hours? But never two deputies at a time? So I'm on call, I'm pulling the Post Falls area deputy over, over here to assist. I'm pulling the East Side deputy over here to assist. Growth has caused us where we're having this conversation today. So, and we've had these conversations before. So I'm, I want to be your police department. We love servicing the city of Hayden. But, Mr. President, you are the 16th largest city in the city of, in the state of Idaho. Cities 14, 15, and 16, I'm sorry, you're the 17th. 14, 15, and 16, 18, 19, and 20, all spend about $2 million on law enforcement. Why do you believe that we should sacrifice the safety of deputies here versus the other cities of your size?
Counsel member De Priest.
Yeah, just to tag on here a little bit as to what Sheriff Norris is relating to. I don't know if any other members here have been on ride-alongs. I asked that question, has anybody else been, okay? I've been on several ride-alongs, and I went on one last Friday. When you look at the, when you look at the statistics, you're right, you look at it and go, boy, there isn't a whole heck of a lot of violent crime. You don't see a whole heck of a lot of it, but it is increasing. Issues are increasing, dangerous issues are increasing. Every time I've gone on a ride-along, and it happened again a couple times the other night, and it's just like Sheriff Norris is saying. You get a call, whether it's a domestic or some type of, they have the ability to look on their, on their computer at the rap sheets, for lack of a better term, the histories of these people that they're dealing with. And there were, I mean, scroll, 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 felon in possession of dangerous type of things that I certainly wouldn't want to go to alone. So here's what's happened on a couple of occasions. And then, one that really sticks in my mind was a domestic a while ago. Get the call, 10:11 at night, forget what it was. Unit rolls to it and has to sit there and wait 15 to 20 minutes for backup. Because I wouldn't want to walk up to that door not knowing what the heck's going on in there and shotgun blast through the door, who knows what? So I can understand the need to wait for backup. 20 minutes later, here comes backup and they address the situation. Scary thing is, a couple things. What could have happened in that house in the 20 minutes that we were sitting there waiting? People could have been killed, who knows what, okay? Again, one man walks up to the door, no thanks, I wouldn't want to do that for my life, because that's what we're talking about. I understand, and I, I agree. Okay, we, we are trying to be as brutal, responsible, whatever the word is, with the taxpayer funds here, okay? We need this. I'm, I'm, I'm going to just jump to it right now, we'll have these comments again, okay? Because of everything that Sheriff Norris has said, and anybody, they'll take you on ride-alongs. I would recommend everybody go on a ride. I recommend everybody go on a ride-along and see the reality of what's happening here, okay? Personally, and again, to address what this whole, what the recommendation here is, it's not up to me, and I, well, because we're all individuals, I guess, my decision is, and I've been saying this since I ran for office, okay? Situations like that, put it on the ballot. I'm not saying I want to raise your taxes, I'm not saying it should be raised, I'm saying the people should have the opportunity to say yes or no. If they say no, that's the way it is. If they say yes, that's the way it is, but the people should be making this, as the mayor initiated this conversation with, this issue with, this is important, and this is an opportunity that falls few and far between, okay, type of thing? And growth is going to continue, and we are going to continue to get the issues that come with it. We better deal with it now. Anybody seen graffiti sprayed on anything recently? Okay, that's the first step, okay? I grew up in an area that was a really nice area, and almost the first step to trouble you see is when you see, you know, back in the corner behind things where nobody can see them doing it, because they're cowards, okay? But that's the first step that then grows, and next thing you know, you have a huge problem. So we do have a problem. We need proactive, uh, law enforcement in this town to deal with it, and I'm, Nancy knows, I'm the one who brought it up. There are a lot, I recognize, there are a ton of people probably on fixed incomes, Social Security, that, yes, this is going to struggle. We have, Holy School District wants to run a levy. Probably the average in here, I don't know, I can't guess, but on the home I live in, it's going to be about three to $400 in addition to Court Lane levy passes. I get it, there's a lot of, the county might run one. We're in a situation where everybody is saying, "We need, we need, we need," okay? But you have to evaluate what, where your priority is, what do we need the most? And I think this is extremely important for the people go in and make that choice in the ballot box.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead. Do you want to go first, or you want me to?
Go ahead.
Councilmember Satterfield.
All right. You know, I don't think, I was, uh, I attended the meetings of this task force as well, and I don't, we just can't keep falling behind. We're growing, the crime is getting worse, and we keep falling behind as far as law enforcement goes. And I think one of the things that Ed pointed out that, you know, I want to stress even more as well, is it's not just about the safety of our citizens, it's the safety of our officers. These guys, you guys read the paper, you see the news, people are just going nuts out there, the violence, the shootings, and everything, and, and these guys, hey, I wouldn't do the job, you know, and thank you for doing the job, because I, I wouldn't do it. Spokane, Spokane overflows here, the drug problem, the gang problem. When's the last time a day, two days have gone by and somebody hasn't gotten shot and killed over there? I mean, it's, I don't think we can deny crime is getting worse. It's just getting worse. We can sit here and debate the reasons all night long, but I was on council when we put this to the people two times before. They said no. And one of the things I struggled with is, okay, the people said no, we should accept that. I think this is such an important issue, and just in the few years since we went out to the people, it's dramatically changed. So, you know, I'm in full support of this, and I, I don't know, like Ed said, it's, you know, we have to pay the cost, too. I don't like increased property taxes, but it's a heck of a deal compared to having the Sheriff's Department police our city. It's one heck of a deal compared to having your own police department, so.
That is, that is absolutely correct.
Look at, look at Rathrum, look at Court Lane, look at Post Falls, you know, I, I think the lowest budget is, what, four million, something like that, five million dollars?
About $2.2 million.
And, and when you're looking at what we're asking the people of Hayden to okay, and I know it hasn't been set, but potentially, it's a hell of a deal.
Your D. Court suspect recently pled guilty to twenty-five years, and he, it was established, and we could find evidence of, that he fired at two of our officers on that day. So, uh, that was the barricade effect when the house got caught on fire. He recently pled to twenty-five years, so. And he was a graduate of the State of Washington Penitentiary System, so.
Councilmember White, comments?
Yes, I just want to thank the, um, thank you Sheriff for all the hard work you, you and your deputies do to keep us safe. Um, and I want to thank the task force, too, for all the time they spent. Um, I did sit in on the last task, task force meeting just as an observer, and I couldn't help but thinking, I wish it had been a workshop of the council people, because there was so much that came out that it would have been, you know, um, council, Councilman Dupree and Satterfield, they were able to sit through these task forces for a long time, and they saw all that was going on. But if I hadn't sat in on that last task force meeting, this meeting would have been a real shock to me, because I wouldn't have seen what was going on. But I still, um, feel that my job is to be proactive, too, and ask questions, and, um, I know that in our, our budget, we have an additional $300,000 for your sheriff's office. So what is that $300,000 going to do for you?
We're, we're going to bring on three deputies at a cost of $545,000. The vehicle, the first-year equipment, the first-year training. So you are going to get three deputies for the 300, but it's going to, it's going to cost $545,000. So basically, the county is, uh, helping the City of Hayden out, and I told the commissioners that, hey, this problem didn't happen overnight, and this problem's not going to be resolved overnight, so this is part of solving that problem over a period of years. It's not healthy to train so many people at one time anyway, so I'm, I'm not a big fan of that. So, so that's what the City of Hayden will receive.
So, because this is coming on so sudden for me, I feel like, um, I feel like this is rushed, and I was just wondering, oh, uh, since we are adding an additional $300,000 in this budget, can we put this, what if we put this levy off for another election and just, uh, see how it goes? Because I really feel like, um, the people have so many increases coming at them, and I haven't seen the figures yet to know how this is going to affect them fiscally if we have this levy increase. What does that increase them personally? I haven't seen facts or figures yet, and I really feel like it's rushed.
I'm your law enforcement representative. I am not, whether you should or shouldn't do anything. I would come to Mr. Warrior at a particular time and say, hey, we have exhausted the X amount of dollars that you have allocated for law enforcement, where would you like to make the cuts? Whether that's in property crime investigations, whether that's in assault investigations, but that time is coming. We, we need to get to a reasonable number comparable to other cities in the state of Idaho. Some of those cities don't have a big box store. Some of those cities don't have the alcohol establishments that the City of Hayden does. I would like to be able to go back, the City of Hayden was a town of thirty, 3,500 people, but that's not likely going to happen. So you're asking, we, we would continue to ask all the residents that live in the unincorporated areas to subsidize their law enforcement service. I live in the unincorporated area, and my service isn't very good. It takes a while for deputies to get there, because generally, we're coming from the City of Hayden. So I can't tell you that I would be, that's not my position. My position is to provide you with a quality law enforcement product. That, that's your decision, whether to bring that forward or not.
I didn't bring my, my notebook with me from the task force, but there was, um, a breakdown with the additional, you know, if we needed three, six, or whatever it is, and I believe that the seventh to nine range, or the eight.
Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah, that's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, it's this sheet, it's.
Yeah, I got it.
It was at the paper copy, at the back of the paper copy, um, that you got.
To have a total of ten deputies would be $145 on each, on the average $500,000 house valuation, so I believe that's one of the numbers that we're talking about, okay? Can that be, on top of everything else, can that be a strain on some people? Sure can, sure can. And, and again, you know, I, I think if we put this off, and you have the, like I said, school district running one, I've heard the county's going to run one for open space preservation, I believe, and who knows what people's actual base tax bill is going to be, and let's say that this passes and that passes, they'll be tapped out possibly, I don't know. They could be tapped out if we wait until the spring to do it. They may want to do it, but they'll say, "I'm tapped out." So I, I think in the situation we're in, it's, everybody's throwing their hands in, or whatever it is, that's probably not right, but, and we're going to see, the people are going to make their choice. Well, I want to vote for the school district and Hayden and not the county, I want to vote for the county. They're going to make the choices. The people are going to make the choices, but I don't believe we can gamble on waiting to be the last ones to throw this down to a ballot situation.
What Sheriff Norris mentioned, that we're putting in an additional $300,000, is it this year? That's a one-time thing.
Say it again, please.
County is, uh, putting in over half a million. My conversations with one of the county commissioners is, they look at this as subsidizing the City of Hayden, and I don't know how, if they'll do it again next year. So, you know, that's something to think about, and again, let the people decide, you know? I know they elect us to make decisions, but this is a big deal, so just let them decide what the heck.
Nancy, we're playing a little electronic tag here, but you're back, you're back live again, I believe.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. A lot of the arguments you're making, um, again, on behalf of, of the task force, these arguments were made. Um, the idea that some, you know, that is crime flat, we don't believe that. We believe that if more cars are being stopped, more drugs would be found. We believe very strongly, looking at the statistics, that there are times that crime is just going frankly unpunished in Hayden, or unseen. It's still there, and it is growing. We discussed the idea of when to put this on the ballot, and, um, and respectfully, I, I know, Councilperson White, that you are very interested in, in protecting the citizens of Hayden, but we have to remember that if this levy were to pass, the collection of that increased amount would not happen for a period of time, and so those $300,000 are one-time money, and Hayden would not beginning actually receiving the benefit of that levy increase. And so, you know, as I said before, we can have these debates all night, but what I can tell you is, every argument you've made so far, we made at least four times, again, um, having the same debate, and what we determined is that, yes, we are asking you to more than double the size of the, the force, if you will, the presence in Hayden. Um, we're, we're asking you to let that go to a vote, because we promised you after four months, the statistics bear the need, and at this point, um, let the rest of, you know, you said it yourself, you wish that more of this, that you could have been present for those discussions. So let's put those discussions into the public, let's let more people hear those discussions and have them with each other, and let the residents decide, um, what crime is acceptable to them, how much money are they willing to put into this? This community supports law enforcement, and rightfully so, we have an excellent force. Um, but we do believe there's more crime based on what we saw than what the numbers show, um, showing that there was a drug call that I called in does not tell you that it took fifteen minutes for police to respond to the impaired driver I called in who was driving into oncoming traffic on Ramsey Road. So that one call, yes, it's one call that resulted in, in drugs, in heroin, but it could have been a death, it could have been an injury, um, and I watched the whole thing happen for almost twenty minutes, with no one able to respond and dispatch apologizing to me that they were unable to get an officer there sooner. That is what we're dealing with, that is the reality. We can talk about hypotheticals of whether or not we can afford it, or whether or not people would vote for it, or we can find out whether or not the people would vote, um, for it, and just leave it there. Thank you for your time.
And Mr. Satterfield, you were correct. The three robbery suspects out of the Superwin in Hayden, they're all from Spokane, and we're hoping to get those in custody here soon, when they've been identified, so, uh, we're hoping to get them in. And it was, it was a robbery, it wasn't a petty theft. Three of them walked in, took a wine bottle, hit one of the employees over the side of the head.
Yeah, that was a, you know, I'm, I'm friends with the family of Mr. McIntyre, and when she told me that, I mean, I grew up here, when she told me they hit this guy over the head with a wine, full wine bottle, I, I mean, that doesn't happen here, it's not supposed to happen here, but it does.
With all due respect, Congressman Satterfield, you know, the, the family of Bo Kirk would agree with you, and he was murdered in the City of Hayden.
Sheriff Norris, um, have you had discussions with the school district about funding of the resource officer at Hayden Mendles Elementary?
Well, I've had a general discussion with them, um, regarding specific fundee at a specific school, no, but I, I think that what Nancy was saying, I think there is a, an appetite for school resource officers in many of our schools, if not all of them, so.
Well, I, I, I agree with you, you know, they're asking, my understanding, they're going to ask for $40 million, and part of that bond levy, um, is for safety. Uh, I, I would, I would, I guess I started asking the question, why should the City of Hayden pay for an expense of the, of the school district? And I, I say that because, looking at this, I'm, I'm, I see a need, but I don't want to fund somebody else's expense either, and so that's why I asked the question, if you've talked, you think they would be receptive enough to pay for their own?
Well, Mr. President, respectfully, I've known many cities that have taken on the burden of a school resource officer, is because, hey, that school happens to be in their city, because there's more benefits of just having that armed officer. There are, that, that deputy that is on that campus can address many quality of life issues, or stop a at-risk youth and point them in the right direction, so, so, and does that help the city, although it's a school district that runs that school? So I, I, I would present to you that I do know many cities that have said, hey, even though that's a, the school district runs that school, here in this city, we want to make sure we have a school resource officer at all of our junior highs and high schools, that, that's, that's not a, because there's other benefits.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, and I agree that we need a resource officer there. I just questioned, since they're asking for a larger bond.
just questioned, since they're asking for a larger bond levy.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I don't know if we need to concentrate on them. We focus right here with the needs here in the city of Hayden. And trust me, I wouldn't be, be talking about this if I didn't think it was necessary. I believe my counsel says that I can educate the public about it, but I can't endorse it. But we can certainly team up with the association, and the association can, the Deputy Sheriff Association, the Cooney County Employee Association can make an assessment whether they believe it's in the public's best interest here in the city of Hayden.
Is that, is that resource officer a .5 or a full? Meaning, I'm just wondering, what, what cost is it to the city? Is, is that for a full officer, for a full year, or?
Well, we, we share the cost. Generally, generally, there is a 60 or 70% cost for the officer, and then we get that officer or that deputy during the summer months. So that's generally how that pie is cut. Nancy, do you have something?
I would agree with everything that you said, Sheriff. We discussed this again at length. And ultimately, what we discussed was whether our money is going, it's all tax money. We will either be taxing it to the school district or taxing it to the city of Hayden. I think most of, most of us supported giving that money to the city of Hayden because then it goes directly into law enforcement. And it really keeps it in our community. It, it doesn't matter how it gets paid for to us. What matters is that these, these children are safe. We talked about all of the other benefits of having that school resource officer who then over school breaks is in our community as another officer on the streets, who is just, you know, writing, writing reports and taking care of administrative things when they, when they can. If, you know, if they're waiting in between, or if they're waiting for the kids to get out of school for a few minutes at the end of the day. There are things they're doing to still support the sheriff's office. And all of it is critically important. But ultimately, who pays for it is just, it felt like finger pointing. And the answer is going to be taxpayers regardless. So let's support that where we can as close to home, which is through our city.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, the city of Post Falls has 1.26 deputies per thousand people. City of Rathron has 1.58. Currently, the city of Hayden has .22 deputies. That is not enough to keep our law enforcement officers safe. And gentlemen, thank you so much for everything that you do to keep our city safe. We appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to mention two things real quick before you go to something. And I made, the sheet that you have received, there are levy rates that are on there. We received the estimated market values, which changed our levy rates as of, we had it last night. And so this, this sheet that you had in your packet Friday has that information. It's probably going to be fairly close, but it tells you based on the officer's amount. But I, I just want to put the caveat, it was an estimate at the time. And with these, the new estimates that we received from the county, we can go back in and replug numbers in and.
Because I was just about to go there. So that's good.
And, and I was going to ask, because we've been going back and forth on the, the process. And, and we wanted to see if we could do a, maybe just a five, 10 minute break, and look at a couple of things as far as the November ballot, that kind of thing.
Before we?
Before you maybe make a decision.
Before we make a decision?
Yeah.
Could you do it in five minutes?
Yeah.
She says yes. Let's take a five-minute break, please.
I need to use the restroom.
Yeah, it's all.
Thank you, Mayor. We are back on the air and we are moving ahead. Sheriff Norris, I wonder if you might, we have a couple more questions here. I wonder if you might entertain us for a moment.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember White.
Yeah, I'm not sure, sure, if you're the one with this answer or not. I just was wondering, for the sake of the voters, exactly what is the ballot going to say? What are we saying yes to?
If you would work with me, we'll follow that up here in just a moment.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
It's a good.
I was just wondering if we had the wording.
We actually need to have legal counsel prepare the ballot. So we're, we need to first have a motion to direct them to do that.
Uh huh.
Okay?
So we won't know what the ballot's gonna say tonight. We don't, what we're voting on?
We should, in general, know what we're, what the ballot is going to say, yes.
Okay. And, and I was also wondering, you know, we have this sheet of the different projections.
Yes.
Which one is it?
It's the one that says 10 total.
10 deputies total at six.
At six, yeah.
But we were already going to add three in our budget.
Um, the three are included in the 10.
No.
So we, so we, we are paying for four, technically. I mean, the school district pays for half. So we have four in the contract. We would add those six. We're not asking to go to 13, meaning adding, the, the three that they're adding this year are not on top of the 10. The three are part of the 10.
And Councilwoman White, my, my suggestion that I provided to the mayor at the break is that if the council is inclined to move forward, the next step is to make a motion to direct staff to draft the ballot language and direct staff to evaluate the viability of getting on to the November ballot. As we're crunching numbers and doing timeframes over here, from a process perspective, we might not, anyways, we have to certify by September 18th, which is a really short timeframe. And then to evaluate whether or not a public hearing, what should be utilized as a tool in determining whether or not, what ballot language to move forward with. So the motion that I've suggested, if you're inclined as a council to move this forward, that's the next step. And then we would bring all of that back to you, probably at a special meeting or at your next regularly scheduled meeting, but I would guess it would be a special meeting.
And I would also like to know the, if this is passed, what's the fiscal impact per household?
So I think you have that in that spreadsheet.
So.
That was in the back of your packet.
I was about to mention that, Council.
We should read that out loud so that people know.
The, so for the public information here, the, and this is an estimate because as you heard Mr. Boyer say, our levy rate is floating a little bit right now. But to add a total of 10 deputies, it will cost, pardon me, to have a total of 10 deputies, it will increase the taxes on an average $500,000 house. It's 500,000 plus a $100,000 homeowner's deduction. It would be a $600,000 home. The increase would be approximately $145 a year. The total that the sheriff is, is, and I'm sorry, that our task force is asking for is a total of $597,000, approximately $600,000. When you consider the level of law enforcement that the cities in our area and in our state have, as you heard the sheriff say, it's approximately $2 million, this is an incredible bargain. We can provide safety to the men and women that we depend on to save our lives and jump into the line of danger for us. $600,000 is a song. I strongly support the task force recommendation on this. And in the event that the council decides to pass it, I pledge to work with you however we need to, to try to get this passed. That being said, I would like to have a motion.
Very good. I'd like the motion to direct staff to do the following, to draft the ballot language, to evaluate the viability of getting on to the November ballot, and to evaluate whether or not it would be to hold a public hearing. Can I read your writing?
Necessary to hold a public hearing.
Necessary to approve the ballot language.
I'll second.
Second. Do we have any further discussion on this subject?
Just a question, and I asked the question.
Council President Roder.
Thanks, Mayor. Is whether or not what staff's gonna bring forward for us to consider, we're not deciding all the variables that are being, being placed into that language.
We'll provide you with a completed draft ballot language proposal.
Based on what?
Based on adding six new officers, based on that estimate that you have there.
So in other words, basically, that, that's not included in the motion?
No.
That we didn't say that.
You just gave direction to draft the ballot, proposed ballot language.
Yeah, but for what you're saying is to add six more will be what's in the dra, in the, in the language.
Yes.
I guess that'd be part of, part of the motion is.
Well, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't determined that, that's why I'm asking.
So give us direction on that.
I have, I have similar concerns to Mr. Roder about the SRO issue. But that does not sway me from my overall support of, of the addition of six new deputies to the, to the force.
We can draft the blanks.
We have other comments, questions?
Council President Roder, we can draft the language and leave the blanks on the specifics for you.
Well, yeah, we just didn't determine, so that's why I'm asking, trying to get.
Yes.
Yes, I was just wondering, could we delay this a bit, have a special meeting to look at the budget again? Because I was under the impression that this information from the task force was gonna come for, to, forward to us in time for our budget, so we could look at the budget and see how it fits in, so.
Maybe I can answer the, on the budget for this year. So in talking with, so the 300,000 that we, that we have in the draft budget right now covers for this budget year.
Yes.
So they're not, we're not gonna be adding, adding to that. If it approves, then you'd be accumulating, and then it would be in the next budget year, we would budget for the additional amount. So that 300,000, it is, would be it for, for this year. That, that tides us over, gets us through this, it's kind of that one-time money to get us through this period of time to see whether or not this would pass or not. Then next year, we see what happens.
So, Fonda, could you describe this process to me one more time, what we're voting on and what the process is?
So the motion before you is to direct staff to draft the proposed ballot language. You don't have that in front of you, so you kind of feel like you're flying a little bit blind without knowing what this ballot language might look like. We can leave the specifics blank so that you can discuss that or have a public hearing if we deem that might be the most prudent for filling in those details. You also have a motion directing staff to evaluate the viability of even getting on to the November ballot. We already alluded, it's a really tight timeframe. And then the last piece was evaluating whether or not it would be necessary to have a public hearing to finalize that ballot language.
So what does a yes vote do? I mean.
Today, direct staff to move to the next step, to get something in front of you that has some meat that you can vote on. I don't know how else to say it.
Does it, does it also include our approval for, for the ballot issue to contain money to hire six more deputies?
If you want to have the ballot language to be complete with the recommendation from the task force, we certainly can do that.
So the likely scenario, what you will see is some ballot language that will refer to a base budget override of X dollars. So, in this case, so it'd be a base budget override, meaning you're approving, the, the citizens would approve the city's ability to raise that base budget above the 3% that we're lawfully allowed to take. We could take more than 3%. And so it, it just says there's a base, again, they need to look at it, that's what we did last time, but it was a base budget increase up, and it was a specific amount. And so we can leave that specific amount blank.
Or we could put in sample numbers based on the recommendation from the task force and highlight it, so you know that's the moving variable when you see the draft language.
And either way, with the new levy numbers, we'll redo that sheet that has all of the estimated numbers in there, so you, but we'll see if anything has changed. And if it looks like, time-wise, we can make this work, we may send out an email and ask for a special meeting, because.
Yeah, that's the only way this is gonna work.
Time will be the essence. If it doesn't look like it'll work or, under, you know, state statute, that we can't do it, then we will, we will still come back with this information and then give direction on when you would like us to put it on.
One, one thing I would like, if possible, is when you do the, the calculations on the costs or how it, how it breaks down, what the numbers are for six additional, I'd like to know, how much does the urban renewal agency get? Because when you increase, we increase our taxes, urban renewal automatically gets X amount of money. My real rough guesstimate, it's really rough, is urban renewal will get up somewhere between 150, 200,000 dollars. That money will not be used for public safety. They'll just get in their pocket, and I'm on the board of the urban renewal. And so I'd like to get that number nailed down so that we know the full impact, because if it's gonna be a voter-approved tax, well, it's not just this 598, 98,843, it's that number plus an additional 100 to 200,000 dollars in taxes that will be collected by the urban renewal district. So I, just for transparency, for our citizens, they need to know the full impact of this. It does have a direct impact that the urban renewal money will collect. Anytime we raise our taxes, urban renewal actually gets an automatic increase.
For those people who give proposals.
Congressman, Congressman.
Okay. There's gonna be a senator. Thank you. All right. All right, a couple things here, and, and I, I too am concerned about that issue that Council President Roder's brought up, and I guess the question I have, can, can, is it possible for an override levy to be specified in, in total, to law enforcement, or does her automatically get a cut of whatever?
Why don't we provide you a full analysis of that?
Yep.
When we bring this back.
That's why I bring it up.
Great, that'd be great.
I think that was your request, was to include that in the analysis.
Yes.
And you don't need to amend your motion for that.
Thank you. Yes, sir, thank you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Congressman President DePree.
Thank you. Yes. Free money for all. The SRO has come up several times, and, and it also, I, I look at that and I see, and I think we've talked about it in, in the meetings, about the school district and, and how that would all work out, but I have to tell you, okay, not only am I retired.
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign.
I agree that, oh.
It hung up on us, sorry.
Being a retired school teacher and having SROs in the building.
To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN.
Sorry, somehow we got muted, I just got a text that, online, they can't hear you. Do I need to start all over and say everything I said again?
No, you don't.
Oh, come on, I like to hear my voice. And also being a coach over Lake City, and I, and, and the SRO is also a coach at Lake City, the relationships that the SROs develop with the kids, when, especially when they are on campus all day and they aren't bouncing around here and there, but it is, it is, it is a vital aspect, especially for at-risk kids and things like that that happen, that if possible, to have an SRO at each school instead of bouncing around.
Councilmember White, did you have a further question or comment?
Uh, let's see. So I'm still wondering about the ballot language. So voting yes today, we would, you would bring it back to us with ballot language? Would we then have an opportunity to vote yes or no on that? So this doesn't finalize?
Yes.
The levy? So, uh.
Yeah, I think, last time, we were very specific to have the council vote on the ballot language.
Yes.
We, we want, that, that's what you will need to do.
Okay, and that will be a public meeting also?
Yeah, yep.
Possibly a public hearing also. That's part of this motion, is to evaluate the prudence of a public hearing for that decision.
Could we specify that we want it to be a public hearing?
This motion has us evaluating and providing information back to you on the prudence of that.
Okay.
And necessity.
Okay, thank you.
I have a note. One more, just kind of the overview now where I'm at, is, we've tried this twice before in a fair. What, what I'm concerned about is having something offered to the public that they'll accept, meaning I want to leave open the number of deputies that we consider, and so that's why we're not finalizing that language tonight, so that, so I want to think about more, what's, what's a better possibility of passing something by how much we're asking for? And, and so I'm, I'm, we do have a need, I, I see that, we're growing, we do have to deal with this. The only question I have is, is, and I wasn't at the committee to the task force to hear all the arguments, and I know that Ms. Jones said, all those arguments were made, well, I want to hear some of these, I want to, you know, talk about it, and we did that tonight, which is all good.
Mr. President, can I have a question for you?
The, you have a motion pending.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to share that I'm not, the variable for me is the number of deputies, so that we can make this thing. That's a, that's a big question, and I don't have that in my mind, but by the time we get to that point, I will, I'll figure that out.
And if you remember from last time, this has, the ballot has, the ballot language would be very specific with regards to dollars.
Right, not deputies, but there'll be, there are relationships, I get that.
Are there any more comments or questions? Hearing non-roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
No.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sheriff, we appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Our next order of business is for the city administrative report and calendar review.
Just a couple of quick items. Tomorrow morning is our employee meeting, our monthly employee meeting, and all of you are invited to that. We also have the benefits folks coming to talk about changes in the benefits, and answer any questions that any of you might have in regards to that. So a representative from AAAA will be here, 8:30 in the morning. Just mention, I know there are a couple of you that may not be here, we have the budget hearing set for August 4th. We want to make sure we have a quorum, I think one or two of you are gonna probably call in for that meeting. And I mentioned earlier, we did receive the estimated market values, and we've gone from a little over 2 billion to 3.37 in valuation for the whole city, so that's a significant increase. But again, keep in mind, valuations have gone up, which will mean our levy rate will significantly drop.
What were those two numbers again?
A little over 2 billion, last year's number, and then the number that's here is 3.37, and it goes out, I can give you a copy of that. So that, that was interesting, but that came last night. Also, the, the group worked on, and we've mentioned the Crawford Park grant before, for a little over a half million dollars, and we did get a formal letter that we did receive that grant, and so we're working on reviewing the contract language, and that should be coming back to you at the next meeting as well for approval. So that's, again, a project adding soccer fields and adding to the 10 additional acres in the back. Also, we continue to work on the tower issue, the wrap. We've, we've gathered additional information, we have some samples, we're not, we're, I've, I've spoken with Brandon from the district and let him know that we're considering it, and we're still waiting for some pricing to come in, how we've requested from three different places to receive more specific pricing. So just an update on a wrap or the water tower. It's not our tower, but you may decide, you may decide to put something on there, so. Any other questions? That's all I have. I do, let everybody go.
We have roundtable, any particular items for discussion on the roundtable, council?
Okay, I would try to make this quick. All right, all right. Some, I'll get to this one first. There have been some assertions by certain people in public and on social media that mixed residential limitation of eight dwellings per acre is unenforceable. I've been receiving numerous inquiries from citizens regarding assertions, and these people want to know what's the deal. The city attorney has advised that, in fact, the limit of eight dwellings per acre is enforceable, and from what I have seen, I'm satisfied with that. Now, also what I've heard a lot from the people, and one of the speakers tonight, in fact, spoke of it, and I, in full disclosure, I spoke with Mr. Boss's wife at length. At a recent planning commission meeting, Planning Chairman Davis, a couple of times, told the people to address their concerns as to the process with the city council. Planning Chair Davis said that PNC doesn't make the rules, criteria, standards, codes, et cetera, that if people want them changed, they should talk to the council. Commissioner Gibson stated, he didn't want to approve the project, but the plan sucks and get the plan changed, but the standards of approval force approval. Commissioner Prickett said, we're forced to approve.
Councilmember DePree?
Yeah.
I'm really sorry, but those projects that were in front of planning and zoning are within the appeal period, so I can't have you speaking of the comments.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was unaware of that still. Okay, I'll go on to the next one then. Well, I've heard from people, as, and as previously, they asked why unelected people are making binding decisions, as Mr. Boss asked tonight. Again, people are walking away from public hearings feeling it's a waste of time asking why, come write letters, et cetera, it doesn't do any good. They wanted the elected representatives who can be held accountable for making land use approval or denial decisions. When planning makes a binding decision, it's perceived, okay, as, maybe not the right word, but a backdoor way to bypass the elected representatives. I think that we need to consider changing code to have all, to have council give final approval on all land use issues. Let me see if I can talk about this one. Probably not. All right. I understand that data and facts are required, and often people, part of the reason they walk away feeling as though, you know, they aren't heard and whatever, is because you can't just come up and say we don't like it. You have to have facts behind you, data, you'll hear the term, data-driven facts, okay? And so we have to understand that when we do these type of things. But some things that, that I don't see appearing to be given much consideration. Page 24 of the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, in the property rights paragraph reads, "The effects of property use on the neighbors in the city must be given equal consideration." Hayden Code 1117E6 Standards of Approval reads, "See, amendments to the zoning map and zone text shall be in accordance with the future land use map and the goal." and the goals and policies found in the Hayden Comprehensive Plan." Just a few examples of goals and policies that I feel don't really get much attention. The Comprehensive Plan vision statement, first sentence reads, "Hayden is reasonably connected with a small-town field defined by its responsible growth and planning." Goal number two, "The Comprehensive Plan is a living document and serves as a guide for development. Components of the Comprehensive Plan are updated as necessary to reflect the community's vision." Are we truly considering the maintenance of a small-town field? Does anyone truly feel that Hayden is maintaining the small-town field? Policy 14, "The city should evaluate community-wide impacts from development, identifying their needs for public facilities, utility services, circulation, which is the roads and the like, and housing and the effects on city resources." Community-wide. Community-wide, not just the immediate vicinity of development. That's policy number 14. Sheriff's already spoken about the effects on service. Ask the people about the circulation or traffic when they're sitting in bumper-to-bumper waiting, sometimes five minutes at certain intersections. Speaking of circulation and traffic, I think that we need to address the traffic impact analysis aspect of the 2040 plan. Maybe have a workshop on the traffic impact analysis. Something is not functioning as assumed. Okay? Uh, section 21 requirements. "The traffic impact analysis shall be prepared in the following cases unless waived by the city engineer. When the peak hour trip generation is expected to exceed 75 vehicle trip ends from the proposed development or when the average daily trip generation is expected to exceed 500 trips from the proposed development or when the proposed development changes the currently accepted Comprehensive Plan land use assumptions." I ask, are we beyond the Comprehensive Plan assumptions? Were the assumptions that many of the streets far too often would be bumper-to-bumper traffic several hours of the day? Were the assumptions that many intersections would be backed up and taking several minutes at times to cross the intersection? Were the assumptions that many streets would be so heavily trafficked in both directions uh, many hours of the day that getting out of driveways and cross streets and especially getting across and going in the opposite direction would both be time-consuming and also increasingly dangerous? Were the assumptions that the traffic would increase dangerous driving resulting in more accidents and road rage-type behaviors? I think we need to consider reducing the trigger of a traffic impact analysis, if not requiring one for every project. So many are not required because they don't trigger one. Well, the cumulative effects of so much development, most of which individually do not trigger an analysis is evident to all who drive our streets. I think that possibly a city-selected agency should conduct an impact study of each project at the applicant expense and evaluate the cumulative effect of trafficking in order to meet policy number 14 requirements of evaluating the community-wide impact. Um, again, these are just something for thought and consideration, maybe workshop, but, but discuss. Thank you.
Any other roundtable comments? Councilmember White?
Yeah. So I was, wanted to address some of the comments made tonight. And Mr. Akiyama had addressed again the wetlands. And I haven't had a chance to read his letter yet. But, um, the fact that this keeps coming forward, I feel like there's not closure for the neighbors in that neighborhood. And people are not satisfied with the answer that the city is giving them. What can we do to help bring closure to neighbors regarding the wetlands? Because wetlands do exist, but how can we help our neighbors along here?
Are you looking for an answer?
I'm looking for an answer.
I.
Or, or could we talk about it at another date?
I, I would suggest we talk about it another date.
Okay.
But the answer is elusive.
Okay.
The answer is elusive. I, I agree.
Mm-hmm. All right. And I wanted to address, um, Dowd Boss's comments as well about the conditional use permits. And I was just wondering, um, uh, I know there's an appeal process to the conditional use permits. Uh, the general public, um, are they aware of a, of an appeal process for these, um, conditional use uh, items that come before the planning and zoning? How would, are they, are people who get up to speak, are they informed that there is an appeal process that they can go to in two weeks?
Well, the appeal process is both statutory and in city code. It's also included in all of the written decisions. The.
Oh, it is included in the written decisions? I don't remember seeing that.
In the written decisions.
Okay.
Um, so I, I can't speak to what somebody at the podium knows or doesn't know.
Okay.
I know that the information is made available to them in a variety of different places.
Okay. All right. All right, and I just wanted to, um, Mr. Stoki has left, but I wanted to thank him for his help in cleaning up the streets and taking care of his neighborhoods. And I think that's really kind of him to do that. So.
I, I think that's one that, uh, we probably want to reach out to him and talk about the other concerns and things. He talks about, I think he's talking up, you know, further up on the lawn area. That's the first we've, you know, heard of it so far. You know, with the new grass and everything, everything looks good. And so sometimes it's just that communication. So knowing that, we might be able to contact him and, and see if we can, um, help with that. So.
Good.
Thank you.
Other roundtable comment? I'm sorry, did I interrupt you?
Thank you, Arton.
Okay, thank you. Any other roundtable comments?
Let's Roger needs to go. I, what Sandy said sparked an item. I, I think, I would like to call an executive session regarding, like Paul Akiyama and those.
Under potential litigation?
Think it would be, because you have a concern, you want to know what, how response. I think it would be helpful to discuss that. And, and what I've heard, I had a neighbor come to me and say that Paul was going around seeking donations to hire an attorney at $100 a shot. So I, I think that it's time to talk.
We can schedule that. We can post and schedule.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Motion.
Sure.
Second.